Okay. Scott.
Okay, everyone. I am going to call to order the October 27th meeting of the Scappus Planning Commission. The first item on the agenda is called order and then roll call.
Hi Bailey.
For Shoemaker.
Scott Jensen.
Bill Blang.
Carlo Vernwald.
You can take that as acknowledgement she's here.
Yeah.
All right. In three, approval of minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes? Comments, I will entertain.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that the minutes is presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Now we're going to do citizen input. This is for things not on the agenda. So if there's anybody that wants to speak on anything that's not on the agenda later tonight, this would be fine. I don't like to speak. Right? Then we move on to item five, new business. Item 5.1 is a street name change. Commerce Drive to Northeast Commerce Drive and Aviation Court to Northeast Aviation Court. City of Scappus proposes to add a directional indicator, Northeast shall drive into Aviation Court. I'll be hearing to order and turn it over to.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Planning Commission. I just wanted to read a few opening statements before we jump into this agenda item. Want to say good evening to everyone. Thank you to the planning commissioners for being present tonight, either here or online. We appreciate your service to the community very much and to the citizens who have submitted comments or who are here either in person or online. Welcome and thank you for participating in the hearing tonight. We do have a substantial amount of information to cover and so I'll ask for everyone's patience and attendance as we and attention as we consider the facts presented tonight. We ask that the audience remain respectful during the presentation and refrain from side conversations that might be disruptive to the hearing. And then we ask that everyone online mute themselves. At this time, it looks like everyone's muted. And then just a note that if you called into the meeting as opposed to joining through the link and you've been muted, you unmute yourself by pressing star six. So, and I'm just going to state this now before we get to the second agenda item, but many of the issues that have been raised are obviously very similar in nature, similar concerns. If a person who's testified before you has already covered the same concerns, we're going to need to have you move on to a new issue that has not already been raised when it's your turn to provide testimony. Testimony will be timed at five minutes per person. So this, in addition to not allowing the repetitious testimony, is so that everyone has a chance to speak on the matter who wishes to speak. So Associate Planner NJ Johnson, right over here, will indicate when you have one minute left by raising a finger or a tee when it's time. Obviously, those of you online would have a hard time seeing him make those motions, in which case he will verbally let you know when it's one minute and when the five minutes is up. We'll try and be as unobtrusive as possible with that. And also, you know, it would be helpful if you set a timer for yourself. If you're able to, then you can kind of track that as well. Again, we ask that everyone online keep themselves muted unless the chair has addressed you and indicated that it is your time to speak. I'm going to turn it over to NJ now. He's going to find out who wishes to speak on either of the agenda items tonight. You will need to state your name and city for the record and if you are an opponent or proponent or neutral on the application.
Good evening. So this is for the online folks specifically. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak on the street name change? If so, please use the raise hand function and wait until you are called on to provide your name and city for the record and indicate if you are speaking as a proponent or opponent. Seeing none, is there anyone online who wishes to speak on the Buxton Ranch application? If so, please use the raise hand function and wait until you are called on to provide your name and city for the record and indicate if you are speaking as a proponent or opponent. Raise hand function can be accessed using the reactions tab on the top. Leonard Aplett, please state your name, city, and if you are speaking as an opponent or proponent of the Buxton Ranch application.
Leonard Aplett, Scappus, Oregon. I'm neutral on the application. I did have a comment though on the plat map that was provided for the subdivision that it showed that Eggleston Lane.
No, that's, that's the comment.
If you could hold on to that until we'll be calling you for comments.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you wanted my comment. Sorry.
Thank you.
We're just doing the housekeeping to try and get it smooth for everybody as possible.
Is there anyone else online that would like to speak on the Buxton Ranch application, either in support or opposition? Please use the raise hand function if so. We just had one more person join us online, so I'll ask once more, is there anyone that would like to speak on the Buxton Ranch application, either in support or opposition? Please use the raise hand function if so. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we have our speaker forms now to the Chair of the Planning Commission. And again, he will address you at the appropriate time to let you know when it's your turn to speak later during the process tonight. So I'll go ahead and kick off, I'm going to start on page eight of the Planning Commission packet. Just know that if you picked one up in the back of the room, I believe this just covers Buxton Ranch. This first one I'll be talking about is just the street name change. So here we go. So the city of Scappus is proposing to rename Commerce Drive to Northeast Commerce Drive and Aviation Court to Northeast Aviation Court. Commerce Drive is continuous with and positioned linearly between Northeast Crown Zellerbach Road and Moore Road. And then Aviation Court intersects with Commerce Drive and extends to the west as a cul-de-sac. So during the first and second phases of the recorded plat for the Columbia Commerce Center, and just so everyone knows, this is located on the east side of the Scappus Airport. Those names on the plat did not contain a directional indicator. For concerns of emergency response, mail delivery, waste management and other services, the inclusion of the directional indicator is preferred and certainly by the Fire Department. And so to clarify that, we are proposing to go ahead and make a recommendation to the Planning Commission to recommend to council that this be approved. There are currently no structures with addresses on these streets. Scappus Municipal Code Chapter 12.24 sets forth the procedure and approval process for renaming streets. The procedure requires a recommendation, as I stated, from the Planning Commission to the City Council for the renaming of any existing street. If the Commission feels there is a strong public need, the renaming of the street is in the best interest of the city, and if the request meets the approval criteria contained in Scappus Municipal Code 12.24.020. Upon receiving Commission's recommendation, the councils then require to schedule a public hearing to consider the request. If approved, they would adopt an ordinance to make that change. So let's see. Shown on pages eight through nine of the Planning Commission packet are the findings related to SMC 12.24.020. On the bottom of page 10, all required noticing has been met for the application. All of the relevant approval criteria have been met. On page 11, again, no comments in opposition to the application were submitted as of the date, well, as of tonight, we didn't receive anything. Based on the findings outlined above, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that Commerce Drive be renamed to Northeast Commerce Drive and that Aviation Court be renamed to Northeast Aviation Court. That concludes my presentation.
Do you have any questions?
Said there weren't any buildings on this. Has anybody, is anybody affected as far as already paying a lot or?
No.
Questions from your staff and then the question. To start and say if the Fire Department wants it, at least they get it. That's pretty simple for me.
I see no reason.
And? Anything else to say? Entertain a motion to make a recommendation to.
Make motions. Good night, Mr. Guy, huh?
Yeah.
I recommend that we approve this. Renaming 12, 12.24.02. Renaming criteria standards.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the street name change for Commerce Drive to Northeast Commerce Drive and Aviation Court to Northeast Aviation Court. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. And it's done for that one and we're moving on to what everybody's interested in today. So this is pocket number SB 1-22, DC 1-22, CU 1-22, SLPD 1-22, 2-22, 3-22, 4-22. We're going to be going in what all that means in the staff report. So there is. Start with a public hearing and I've got a script. I am calling this public hearing to order to consider a consolidated application for subdivision and development overlay change. Additional use and sensitive lands development permits for floodplain, wetlands, slope hazard and fish riparian corridor. The procedure for this hearing will follow a strict format. Testimony and evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report or to the criteria the person testifies leaves to apply to a decision. Persons may speak only after being recognized by the chair. Must come forward to the microphone or be called on by the chair for all online participants. State their name and city for the record. Only testimony that is relevant to the application will be considered. Immaterial or repetitious testimony will not be allowed. A time limit of five minutes will be imposed for each person wishing to testify. Failure to raise and clarify an issue to afford all parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on the issue. Planning Commission will conduct this hearing in a quasi judicial capacity for the conditional use and development overlay zone change and sensitive land. In other words, like a court trial where the Planning Commission serves as finders of fact based on the relevant approval criteria. Verbal testimony during the hearing is allowed for quasi judicial decisions. This is a consolidated hearing and the subdivision applications shall be processed as a limited land use decision. It does not take verbal testimony because it does not require interpretation or the exercise of policy or legal judgment. Therefore, any verbal testimony shall be limited to the issues related to use and development of relay zone change and the sensitive lands development permit. There shall be no audience demonstration or other conduct which would disrupt the hearing. Does any Planning Commission member wish to declare any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest regarding this matter?
No.
All right. No conflicts. Does anybody wish to challenge any Commissioner's impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? Could you stand up?
Give her a mic.
Yeah. Let me get a mic.
Are you?
Yes. Just heard.
Hold on one moment.
Right. Thank you.
I just heard rumors. I don't know if they're true, but guys that already made up your mind. So is that true or?
No.
Thank you.
Does any other party wish to challenge any Commissioner's impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? Anybody online? On the phone? Okay, seeing none. The order of the hearing will be the staff report and the applicant's presentation and proponents, sorry, applicant's presentation. We have some neutral comments, then proponents, then opponents, then rebuttal by the applicant, finally a staff response. Thereafter, the hearing will be closed for consideration of matter by the Commission. And the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to City Council of this application. Okay. Staff report.
All right. Thank you. So I will, I will begin by going over the observations at the beginning of the staff report. And that starts on page 23 of the packet. Then I'll let you know where the relevant approval criteria can be found, where the findings to those criteria are within the staff report. And then lastly, I will provide staff's recommendation and the conditions of approval. So starting on page 23 of the packet under subject site. Okay. So the subject site is approximately 17 acres. It's located south of Southwest JP West Road near Captain Roger Cussera Way. And that is just south of Veterans Park. South Scappus Creek and Southwest Fourth Street are located to the east and Southwest Jovan Road to the west. The site is zoned R1, low density residential, and it's designated as suburban residential on the comprehensive plan map. Adjacent zoning is moderate density residential R4 and high density residential A1 and public lands utility to the east. Public lands recreation to the north and low density residential R1 to the west and south. The subject site does not have an address assigned currently. It consists of a single tax lot, Columbia County Assessor Tax Lot Number 3212CB00401. The site is currently vacant except for an old barn storage building and the site has historically been used for agriculture. The site slopes downhill from west to east towards South Scappus Creek, which flows northward along the eastern portion of the site. There's also a small stream that flows in a southwest, in the southwest of the site that flows in an easterly direction and then where it flows joins into South Scappus Creek. The elevations along the northern portion of the property range from 75 feet at the northwest corner to 50 feet at top of bank of Scappus Creek. In the southern portion of the site, the high elevation is 108 feet adjacent to tax lot 2000. And then it slopes downward to the east to an elevation of 50 feet at South Scappus Creek. Slops range from 1.5 to 27%, which can be seen on exhibit 4E. The site contains floodplain, wetlands, fish and riparian corridor and slope hazard areas as further described in the sensitive lands development permits heading, which we'll get to soon. Under observations, consolidated land use application. Again, the applicant is requesting seven separate applications to be approved. The Planning Commission provides a recommendation to City Council for the planned development application. Council is the decision-making body for that application. So typically, the Planning Commission would decide on the remainder of the applications, the subdivision, conditional use and sensitive lands development permits. However, since this is a consolidated proceeding, the higher approval body will decide on the entire application. All seven requests would need to be approved in order for the proposed phased residential subdivision to occur. Under proposed plan development. So a plan development acts as an overlay zone change to one particular parcel and it's processed again as a zone change. Plan developments are generally utilized when there are natural resources to be protected on a site. And so as stated in the Scappus Development Code Chapter 17.81, the purpose of the overlay is to provide more flexibility in the development of land, encourage variety and creativity in the development pattern of the community. It's to conserve natural land features, to facilitate aesthetic and efficient use of open space and to create community development which contribute to superior living or development patterns. Again, this also could apply to like a commercial use. That's not how it's being used here. And it's to use land efficiently in order to reduce costs of housing maintenance, street systems and utility networks, to promote energy conservation and crime prevention and to relate the development to the natural environment and its users. Plan developments are meant to offer a balance of flexibility and predictability regarding the city's development standards. So any latitude granted by the city is offset by the fact that the development has to conform to a unique set of standards applicable to the site. Through this mechanism, the city is assured that construction will be consistent with the vision endorsed in the approval of the planned development. And so the applicant has stated in their narrative, the goals and objectives of the planned development are as follows, to take advantage of and protect the sensitive environmental visual and recreational values of South Scappus Creek and wetlands on the property, to provide a quality subdivision for single family homes with recreational amenities for residents and the public to enjoy, to maintain floodplain storage capacity with a balanced cut and fill while ensuring the home sites and adjacent properties are safe from flooding, to create usable recreational out open space and enhance the overall visual and recreational quality of the development with a combination of parks and open spaces with quality landscaping, to accommodate a housing type and size that provides options for the local community is affordable and provide opportunities for next generations of Scappus residents. Also, it would accommodate future development via the extension of the public street. The applicant proposes to cluster the residences away from South Scappus Creek and to create several tracks to preserve open spaces. The applicant is seeking approval of specific dimensional standards to accommodate the proposed unit count as allowed in the flexibility in the planned development process. The applicant is seeking a 4% increase in residential density. And then images of the applicant's anticipated housing styles are included as exhibit 27 in the full report that has all the exhibits. Again, not the packets you guys received in the back of the room, just have the plan sheets in front of the blue page. Everything is online though, if you wanted to look at everything else. Under sensitive lands development permits, again, there's four different permits they're requesting. Under floodplain, I'm at the bottom of page 24 for anyone who's following along. Portions of the site are located within the 100-year floodplain. So the floodplain for the creek was previously defined by FEMA flood insurance rate maps. The numbers are listed here. But those map panels became effective November 26, 2010. FEMA issued a letter of map revision effective April 19th of last year. That was to correct the base flood elevations on the subject property and along other properties along the creek to reflect current conditions. This is now the official record of the special flood hazard area. The associated existing floodplain boundary is depicted with a green dashed line in the applicant's drawings. More recently, the applicant consultants have obtained FEMA approval of a conditional letter of map revision. This is FEMA's process of evaluating whether the applicant's proposed floodplain activities meet the National Flood Insurance Program standards. The city can then rely on the CLOMAR approval to authorize floodplain modifications, including site construction such as grading roadways and utilities. After the work is completed by the applicant to put in the roads utilities and to complete all the grading, the applicant would then submit as-built drawings and survey information back to FEMA for review. Assuming the construction is completed in line with the conditional letter of map revision, then FEMA would issue a new letter of map revision to redefine the floodplain. And so the proposed boundary is indicated with a blue dashed line in the applicant's drawings. The proposed site grading would expand the flood storage capacity by cutting more material than filling. That is a requirement in our Scappus Development Code Chapter 17.84. The subdivision project includes a proposed fill of 2,494 cubic yards within the floodplain and then a similar, a cut of 2,503 cubic yards also within the same floodplain. And that's the removal of material. And that results in a net removal of nine cubic yards of material. Under wetlands, the site contains six identified wetlands. I'm not going to read through all those. The information is here for you. There were two different wetland delineations completed on the site which DSL has concurred with. The concurrence letters are included as exhibit 15. The applicant proposes temporary activities within Wetland A and that's only to allow for a sanitary sewer connection to an existing manhole. There is also proposed grading within the 50-foot buffer associated with wetlands located west of South Scappus Creek. In addition to city sensitive lands development approval, wetland filling and mitigation is subject to applicable standards issued by the Army Corps of Engineer and the Department of State lands, although in this case, the wetland impacts are likely below the 50 cubic yard DSL threshold for a state wetland permit. And Wetland A is likely not regulated by the US Army Corps of Engineer. Still, the recommended conditions of approval require that the applicant submit a no state permit required letter from DSL if no permit is required so that staff is aware of that fact. Fish and riparian corridor. The site is located along South Scappus Creek and contains fish and riparian corridor. The Scappus Bay Watershed Council performed creek restoration activities in 2018 and 19 within the site and at Veterans Park. That was to include bank laybacks to minimize active bank erosion and provide channel capacity during high flows. They also put in floodplain benches to increase floodplain interaction during seasonal flows, seasonal flood flows and side channel reconnections to access historic off-channel areas. The applicant has included a FEMA. The applicant has included a FEMA ESA compliance assessment technical memo, and this further explains that the project restored the western bank of the creek in two areas, and again, created the inside, inset floodplain side channels in two other areas. The applicant proposes activities within the Fish and Riparian Corridor, including a proposed compacted gravel public pathway to provide a public amenity, construction of Eggleston Lane where it connects to JP West Road, grading, and a stormwater outfall. The applicant proposes to plant native species within the Riparian Corridor extending west to the edges of the residential area. Under slope hazard areas, portions of the site are defined as slope hazard areas under the SDC. Again, that stands for Scappus Development Code. The applicant is seeking approval of sensitive lands development permit for activities, grading, installation of water main, et cetera, within the slope hazard area. The geotechnical report, which is included as Exhibit Sixteen, notes that the proposed development is geotechnically feasible, provided that the recommendations of the report are incorporated into the design and construction phases of the project. Therefore, the recommended conditions of approval would require that the applicant follow the recommendations in the geotechnical report. Under proposed subdivisions, street system, and right-of-way dedication, the applicant requests approval of an application, again, to subdivide a little over seventeen acres into forty-eight single-family residential lots. They're proposing lots ranging in size from three thousand four hundred and ten square feet to thirteen thousand eight hundred and three square feet, along with seven open-space tracts. Track A would support a private park with a picnic table and overlook the wetland area in Track B. Track B would be open space, including a wetland. Track C would support a stormwater facility. Track D would be the site of the future Greg Buxton Park. Track E would be open space. Track F would support a wetland, and Track G would support a stormwater facility and open space. Track D, the site of future Greg Buxton Park, includes construction of a public compacted gravel trail starting near the intersection of JP West Road and the proposed Eggleston Lane extension. The public trail extends south from the starting port, point along the western edge of the Scappus Creek Riparian Corridor, and then connects back to Eggleston Lane south of Lot Eighteen. Again, this can be seen on Exhibit Four P, which is, let me see. Which is Page... Page Two Thirty-Nine. Track D would also contain considerable open space and riparian plantings to preserve habitat and maintain water quality. The applicant requests phasing of the proposed subdivision. So they're proposing Phases One and Two. These are for plating purposes relating to the floodplain on-site. So the Scappus Development Code requires for any, any lot where a home is to be placed within the boundary of the subdivision to be a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. Obviously, that's not the size of these lots, and so, all of the lots that are not within the currently mapped Hundred Year Floodplain would be in Phase One. And then, following the construction of the subdivision, the recording of the Phase One plat, and the approval of the letter of map revision, at that point, and not until that point, would the city allow the applicant, once the floodplain maps have been formally adopted and have, the floodplain boundary has legally been revised according to FEMA, would the second-phase plat be able to be recorded? And at that point, all the lots would be out of the floodplain, which is why they could record the plat for the second phase. At that point, none of the lots would be in the floodplain. The applicant is not proposing to construct houses in the floodplain. The floodplain boundary would have already been changed, and none of the lots would be in the floodplain. Okay, so let me catch up. Let's see. Shh, shh, shh. Okay, so, again, at that point, the applicant would be allowed to obtain building permits for homes in the Phase Two portion of the subdivision. The development proposes a ten-foot dedication and half-street right-of-way improvement to JP West Road to the collector standard for approximately six hundred feet. This is consistent with the city's transportation system plan. The improvements include curb and gutter, eighteen feet of paving to centerline, except if there's existing paving that's acceptable, six-feet sidewalk, five-and-a-half-foot planer area with street trees, streetlights, and storm system improvements. For the street within the subdivision, the applicant proposes construction of a new local street, Eggleston Lane. This would extend south from JP West Road, and it's stubbed to the south end of the site to allow for a future roadway construction. Again, as seen on Exhibit Four G, Eggleston Lane would be improved to meet the city's local road section, including a thirty-two-foot paved width with curb and gutter, five-foot sidewalks, five-and-a-half-foot planer area with street trees and streetlights. The southwest Eggleston Lane right-of-way is proposed to extend to the southern boundary of the site, the right-of-way, but the improvements are proposed to stop just north of the Riparian Corridor associated with the unnamed stream to minimize environmental impacts. Under traffic impact analysis, I'm on Page Twenty-Eight. The applicant submitted a traffic to impact study, TIS for short, completed by Kittleson and Associates. That's attached as Exhibit Twenty-Two. The study estimated that the proposed forty-eight lot development would generate five hundred and fourteen daily trips, of which thirty-eight would be during the morning peak hour and fifty would be during the evening peak hour. The applicant's transportation engineer concluded that all study intersections meet the respective mobility standards and targets before and after the proposed development. Therefore, no transportation mitigation was recommended by the applicant's transportation engineer. The TIS indicates that approving the zone change and plan development would be consistent with the state, with the state transportation planning rule, since it would not significantly affect area roadways, as discussed in more details in the findings. Public utility improvements. Municipal water is available from an existing twelve-inch water main in southwest JP West Road. The applicant would, proposes to extend the eight-inch water main to the southern paving limits, and then to loop the existing water main in the southwest portion of the site. Water meters will be installed to serve each lot, and that can be seen on the preliminary water plan. Sanitary sewers available, actually, in the site, as well as via an existing eight-inch main in JP West Road. The applicant proposes to extend an eight-inch sewer main within Eggleston Lane right-of-way to the southern paving limits and install laterals to serve each lot. The applicant proposes that stormwater from Buxton Ranch subdivision would be managed within two stormwater facilities to be located within Tracks C and G. The applicant submitted a preliminary storm drainage report detailing the stormwater approach. Per the draft covenants, conditions, and restrictions, CCNRs, the homeowners associa, association will maintain the stormwater facilities. Under street trees and landscaping, the development code requires street trees along all street frontages. The applicant has submitted a preliminary planting plan. The applicant's proposing a total of sixty-six street trees along the extension of Eggleston and JP West. Again, the applicant's required by the recommended conditions of approval to submit the final tree planting plan in conformance with the development code and municipal code. And as we stated before, the applicant is proposing six open-space tracts as part of the proposed development. This is also explained in Table Two of the applicant's narrative. All tracts are landscaped to varying degrees. There's a variety of vegetation provided on the planting plan. Landscaping in Track D, the future Greg Buxton Park where the creek is located, would consist of high grass, medium-to-dense brush with trees, dense forest with medium undergrowth, and dense forest with little undergrowth, as shown on Exhibit Four P. There's also a variety of fencing that is proposed. You can also see that on the landscaping plan. Around water quality facilities, either wood, split rail, or black chain link fencing is proposed. Cedar fencing with steel post is proposed in the rear and side yards of the homes. And then, lastly, a lock-and-load retaining wall system is proposed outside of the floodplain areas. And again, there's a fencing plan on Exhibit Four P. So, under public and private agencies and public notice, the city of Scappus Engineering, Public Works, Police Department, Building Department, and City Manager have been noticed. Scappus Rural Fire District, Columbia County Public Works, Oregon Department of State Lands, Columbia River PUD, Scappus Bay Watershed Council, Columbia County Soil and Water Conservation District, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, and Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development have provided an opportunity to review the proposal. Staff did not receive any objections from any of these agencies. Agency comments are included as Exhibits Twenty-Eight through Thirty-Seven, and any issues that are pertaining to the Planning Commission have been included in the recommended conditions of approval. The Scappus Fire District submitted a comment that two private lots cannot be used to, cannot be shared to establish a hammerhead. So the fire district just had concerns regarding the maintenance, if it was just an easement, and so, the applicant did volunteer to place that hammerhead in a tract rather than in an easement. This is included in the recommended conditions of approval. And then, the applicant would be required to pave that hammerhead and to provide curbs along the track, which would clearly denote that tract as being a hammerhead, and also signage and striping. This alleviated the concerns of Scappus Fire District regarding the hammerhead, and then additionally, all lots within the development are required to be sprinkled. The Columbia County Soil and Water Conservation District chose not to comment on the application since it is a non-regulatory agency and permits are required to meet environmental standards and regulations. A notice of the request was mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the subject site on October sixth of this year. Notice was posted on the property September thirtieth and published in the local newspaper October seventh and fourteenth. So we have received a number of comments that are a part of this report. They are attached as Exhibits Thirty-Eight through Forty-Seven. An applicant response has been provided for comments attached as Thirty-Nine through These additional responses by the applicant are included as additional findings to the report, and staff concurs with the applicant's responses. And then, I wanted to just go over, we did receive a number of comments that were not received in time to be included in the staff report. And so, the comments that were received after the staff report were issued will be added to a revised Planning Commission staff report with today's date, along with the applicant's response to each comment. And so, I'll just run through the names of the people who submitted the comments. And so, staff submitted a comment, which was a memo to the Planning Commission about how this application differs from previous, from the previous Buxton Meadows subdivision application from two thousand and three. An applicant, there was an applicant response provided to Joel Haugen's comment. There's a, there's a fly. There's a revised Exhibit Forty-Two, which was Jim Licon's comment. The revised Exhibit Forty-Two removes the applicant's response from within the body of the Licon's comment and includes the applicant's response as a separate sheet within the same exhibit number. The Licon's comment did not change, nor did the applicant's response change. The only thing that changed is that those were separated. And that was a request by Mr. Licon's. Let's see, we had a comment from the owner of the subject site, Chip Buxton. There was a comment submitted by Roy Jobin in an applicant's response. There was a comment submitted by Shannon Hubler, I hope I'm saying that right, in an applicant's response. There was a comment from John Hancock and Jennifer Hancock, and photos submitted. And then, there was a combined applicant's response to John and Jennifer Hancock. All of those items I just mentioned, we did have copies in the back room, so hopefully we had enough for everyone. The Planning Commission received copies of the public comments and the applicant's response, printed copies, again, like I said, were available at the back table. The comments have been included in the record and will be added as Exhibits to the revised staff report. And the public comments are also posted on the city website for public viewing. So I want to point out where the relevant approval criteria are located within the staff report. The statewide planning goal findings are on, are found on Pages Twenty-Nine through Thirty-Four. Findings related to applicable comprehensive plan goals and policies are found on Pages Thirty-Four through, oops, hang on. I said Thirty-Four through Twenty, that's not right. So this is Comp Plan Policies, okay, Thirty-Four through Forty. Criteria related to amendments to the zoning map are found in Chapter Seventeen Point Two Two. The findings are on Pages Forty-One through Forty-Four. Criteria for Chapter Seventeen Point Four Four are one, Pages Forty-Four through Forty-Five. Chapter Seventeen Point Eight One, Plan Development, are found on Pages Forty-Six through Fifty-Nine. Chapter Seventeen Point Eight Four, Sensitive Lands Flooding, are found on Pages Fifty-Nine through Sixty-Five. Chapter Seventeen Point Eight Five, Sensitive Lands Wetlands, found on Pages Sixty-Five through Sixty-Nine. Chapter Seventeen Point Eight Six, Sensitive Lands Slope Hazard, findings are on Pages Sixty-Nine through Seventy-Four. Chapter Seventeen Point Eight Nine, Sensitive Lands Fish and Riparian Corridor, findings are on Pages Seventy-Five through Seventy-Eight. Chapter Seventeen Point One Hundred, Landscaping, Screening, and Fencing, findings are on Pages Seventy-Eight through Eighty. Chapter Seventeen Point One Oh Four, Street Trees, found on Pages Eighty through Eighty-One. Chapter Seventeen Point One Oh Six, Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, findings are on Page Eighty-Two. Chapter Seventeen Point One Three Oh, Conditional Use, findings are on Pages Eighty-Two through Eighty-Three. Chapter Seventeen Point One Five Oh, Subdivisions, findings are on Pages Eighty Through, Eighty-Three through Eighty-Six. Chapter Seventeen Point One Five Four, Street and Utility Improvement Standards, found on Pages Eighty-Seven through Ninety-Three. Chapter Seventeen Point One Six Two, Procedures for Decision-Making Quasi-Judicial, Pages Ninety-Eight through Ninety-Nine. And then, if you can turn to Page Ninety-Nine of the staff report. So, based on the findings of fact contained within the staff report, which respond to the relevant approval criteria and the materials submitted by the applicant, staffers recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the consolidated application to the City Council with the fifty-two conditions of approval in place. As the Planning Commission knows, you know, staff always includes a number of conditions of approval, and that's for every application that we process, and that ensures that the application will meet the development code. Many of the conditions included are just standard to any subdivision, and so, just for reference and, and for, you know, context, we had a recent nine-lot subdivision without any other applications consolidated with it, and that one contained thirty-one conditions of approval, just to give you some reference. The fifty-two conditions of approval related to this application, then, are more because it also includes specific conditions related to the plan development overlay and to the sensitive lands. And so, that's why this list is, is longer than, than others. That is an overview of the staff report, and that concludes my presentation. However, the applicant will provide a presentation as well.
Ready to take a deep breath? Now, we'd like to ask the applicant to present their application.
And Jase, that does not look like it's sharing screen. NJ, is that doesn't look like it's sharing screen. Marissa, can you confirm if you can see the applicant's presentation?
I can, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, NJ.
I don't get to work with a mouse tonight, so bear with my finger control. My name is Matt Sprague with Pioneer Design Group, and our team is here tonight to try to provide some detailed information to the Planning Commission and to the members of the public who showed up tonight. Really appreciate your volunteer time in reviewing this application. We appreciate the public coming out to try to understand in better detail what this project is all about. So, we do have a... A little louder, okay. We have four people that are going to testify in our presentation tonight. Please bear with us, it's a little longer than what we would normally do, but there is a lot to cover, and there are a lot of concerns in the community that we would like to definitely cover to make them feel more comfortable about the project and what is proposed on the site. So, NJ, just as a clarification on this particular computer, how do you change the slides? Okay, thank you very much. So, this is Buxton Ranch. It's a 48-lot subdivision with plan development review, conditional use permits, sensitive lands permits, four of them, and phased planning. The project team includes the applicant, which is David Weekly Holmes. The owner is Buxton Family Investments LLC. The applicant's representatives for planning, engineering, surveying, and landscape architecture is Pioneer Design Group. Hydraulic analysis is West Consultants. Eric McCarthy will be speaking tonight. The geotechnical engineer is Geo-Pacific Engineering. The biologist, Environmental Science and Assessment LLC, and Jack Dalton will be talking tonight. Traffic engineering is Kittleson Association, and Matt Bell is here with us tonight to discuss traffic. And land use attorney is Garrett Stevenson with Shawby Williamson &amp; Wyatt, and he is also here for any questions that you might have. This is just a simple map of the city's zoning to show the site location, which is here, surrounded with the red dash lines. To the east, you can see R4 zoning and some A1 zoning. Those are higher-density residential districts. To the north is the park, which is a public lands zoning designation. And then, north and west and south is R1 zoning, which is the same zoning that is on the subject site. This is the preliminary plat. I'm not going to get into a lot of detail on this particular slide. It's meant to show how the project is clustering the units over on the western side of the site. I also wanted to point out something that is important, that this line right here that I'm showing you, that is the riparian buffer line. And all of this space that is outside of that riparian buffer is going to also be preserved as open space and planted and to increase the habitat value and the area of the resource. This map will set up some future presentation from our hydraulic engineer. Wanted to just show the preliminary plat with the red line. This is the floodway, so during a 100-year event, this is the area within which water is generally moving. Outside of that, out to the green line, the green line is the current 100-year floodplain. As you can see, it goes out into these areas of the site here. Generally, the water within those areas is very static. It's waiting for water to move down the stream system, and then it slowly drains out. With the modifications we're proposing, we're doing some cut down in the floodplain in this area and some fills in the green areas above, which will result in this blue line here being the new floodplain boundary. To quickly discuss the phasing plan. Phase 1, it's only 18 lots, but it also includes all of the open space tracks and the public streets. And the lots that are within this phase are currently outside of the existing floodplain map. Phase 2, those lots are within the existing floodplain map, but after modified and a LOMA approval from FEMA after construction of the project, those lots will also be outside of the floodplain map. This is an aerial photograph that kind of gives you an idea of the site's location and its size and shape from above. You can see that a majority of the site has been farmed. Year to year, the grass cutting out there changes in shape, but you can see that there's not a substantial amount of riparian corridor associated with a creek along that western boundary, which we hope to, our plan will increase drastically. This is a rendering of the Buxton Ranch project. This really gives you a good idea of how those homes are clustered on the western part of the site. And it also shows that the largest lots are being proposed along the perimeter of the project adjacent to other homes that are located off-site. See, this open space area up here is an open space tract plus a small stormwater facility. The stormwater facility is addressing the storm drainage for street improvements that are being made along JP West Road. Tract A is an open space park owned by the Homers Association. It'll have a picnic table area and an overlook into Tract B, which is right here, which is an existing wetland area. I don't know, what did I do, NJ? Okay. Okay. What's really important to note here, too, is that you can see all of these wetland areas out here not being impacted by this development. They are being avoided. The only wetland area that's actually going to see a temporary impact is right at this location here, where we need to connect to an existing city sanitary sewer manhole to update a pipe that is basically at its year-end. So, if that wasn't done, then there's the potential for future problems with that pipe moving forward. You can see the trail here that connects to Eaglesston, and it runs behind the water quality facility or stormwater facility. All of the lots, we have another intervening trail that goes back out to Eaglesston there, and the trail continues south and comes back out to Eaglesston here, creating a looped public trail system and an extension, basically, of the trail system that is in the Scapuse Veterans Park. It's important also to show here all of this landscaping. And here, much of this is outside of the riparian buffer. So, we're increasing the amount of riparian buffer for South Scapuse Creek as well as landscaping and increasing the value of the habitat. So, we had some project goals that resulted in some benefits for this 48-lot subdivision. If you'd noticed in this slide, for single-family residential lots, only 31% of the land area is attributed to the single-family lots themselves, and with right-of-way of approximately 9.45%. If you look then at parks and open space tracks, 57% of the site be maintained in open spaces, such as natural resource areas and parks. It's 57%. One of our goals was to expand the riparian vegetation areas between the creek and new development, take advantage of and protect the sense of environmental, visual, and recreational values of South Scapuse Creek and the wetlands on the property. Wanted to ensure we maintain flood storage capacity with balanced cut and fill, and did that by clustering residents away from South Scapuse Creek. We created several tracts to preserve open space to ensure that the home sites are safe from flooding in perpetuity. Wanted to provide a quality subdivision for single-family homes with recreational amenities, not just for the residents, but also available to the public, which are the compacted gravel public trails. Wanted to accommodate a housing type and size, provides options for the local community, is affordable, and provides opportunities for next generations of Scapuse residents to stay in town. We also wanted to ensure we accommodated future development, the extension of the public street to the south, making that available. I'm going to show you some elevations of typical types of homes that David Weekly constructs. You can see that they have a variety of material types, architectural styles, that allow, basically, so that you don't have the same-looking house throughout the entire development, because that's not what you want. So, they do a really good job of changing up the materials and architectural styles to create uniqueness for each home. There's a couple more. This one up here is a two-story unit, which you might typically find on the larger lots in the subdivision along the western border. And there's even a single-story elevation here that's an opportunity on some of those larger lots as well. I'm going to turn this over to Matt Bell. I'd like him to talk about the traffic. You got it.
So, again, my name is Matt Bell, and I'm with Kittleson &amp; Associates. We're traffic engineering and transportation planning based out of Portland. So, we prepared...
Enunciate at the mic, please.
We prepared a traffic impact study for the development back in May of 2022. Did the work in coordination with the City of Scapuse and with the Oregon Department of Transportation. The study evaluated traffic operations and safety at several intersections on JP West Road, Maple Street, and US 30. And then... Do you want to go to the next slide? And the... Sorry. The study methodology and assumptions reflect current standards and practices and guidance in the Scapuse Transportation System Plan, particularly as they relate to mobility standards and analysis methodologies for the study intersections. The... Let's see, do you want to go next? The traffic impact study... Pardon me. The development is expected to generate approximately 514 daily trips, including 38 trips during the morning and 50 trips during the evening peak hours. Those trips are expected to... Those are the trips that form the basis for the traffic analysis at the study intersections under existing and future conditions. The analysis shows that all the intersections are expected to meet mobility standards and targets with and without the proposed development during those peak time periods. The analysis also shows that there are no... The historical traffic data doesn't show that there's any trends or patterns in the data that would require mitigation associated with the project. That being said, the proposed development will provide improvements along JP West Road and along the site frontage and beyond, as indicated previously. So, I guess I just wanted to finish up by saying that I understand that there may be some concerns about traffic. However, the amount of traffic that's being generated by the site and the impact that it's going to be having on the adjacent intersections are well within the thresholds that are established by the city's Transportation System Plan and the Oregon Department of Transportation's Oregon Highway Plan. And I'm available tonight to answer any of your questions about the study methodology, findings, and recommendations.
I'd like to have Jack Dalton, our biologist, come up and provide some testimony.
I work with Environmental Science and Assessment, and we're based out of, again, really...
Really?
Well, sorry. Yeah, we're based out of Portland, Oregon. And so, we were... We did the wetland delineation, which started, you know, in 2018, 2019. It was split into two parts. One was basically based on the project area. The other was more in the floodplain area. We identified two of the larger wetlands and the South Scapuse Creek within the floodplain, and those are definitely the higher-quality habitats on-site. And then, there's several other wetlands that you've heard about in the staff report that are lower quality and they're essentially in disturbed areas or in the pasture area. So, then, in 2018, while we were beginning, continuing with our study there, the South Scapuse Bay Watershed Council started the installation of the segment of the creek. And that aspect of it, where they enhanced the bank and pulled back the bank, did some plantings, that was included in our analysis that was part of the FEMA ESA compliance. So, that analysis evaluated the site for listed US fish and wildlife species, and then, there's three anadromous fish species that are listed that are in that creek. So, as part of that, we met with ODFW, which is part of the FEMA process, but also the Scapuse process. And we walked the site, and we talked about the different... Where the project location was, the limits. And we talked about the sensitive areas, and there are a lot of their recommendations are what was incorporated into the project. So, this one is really to show the site plan and the riparian habitat. So, as we've talked about several times tonight already, the base buffer that is a 50-foot buffer along, in the floodplain, that is of the wetlands and the creek. So, you can see that the cursor there kind of outlining that. That's what you start with, and then, there's... Then, in this particular case, there's two other wetlands in the interior of the project that have smaller buffers that are outside the floodplain. But the thing to kind of notice in this aerial is that that 50-foot buffer, the vast majority of that is not, you know, vegetated with trees or shrubs. It was, and essentially, that whole property was managed as pasture. So, there wasn't a lot of that to start with when we even, when we got out there. And so, what you can see is like the project footprint is in that managed, historically farmed, or at least pasture area, and all of the floodplain and the higher-quality areas on the east side, outside of that. So, with this landscape plan, and Matt has talked about this a little bit, one of the recommendations of ODFW was, yes, maintain the base 50-foot buffer there, and that's in that protected open space. And then, part of the landscape plan is to enhance that. But their recommendation was to extend that enhancement as far as you could to provide just more buffering along that creek, because their concern was the floodplain wetlands and all the higher-quality habitat there. So, you'll have, so you have basically that area between the 50-foot buffer up to the eastern edge of the project there. So, one of the... The landscape plan will include kind of a mix of different habitat types that will grow in, that are planted in grass or a shrub or dense forest with native shrubs underneath. So, looking at this, this is kind of this plan that comes together from a bunch of different places that event... You know, ultimately, the riparian enhancement from all these studies and all, you know, and looking at the existing conditions helps to increase the diversity and really improves the insensitive floodplain habitat from what it was to start with.
Yes. So, I'd like to have Eric McCarthy with West Consultants come up and talk about the floodplain. It seems to be a very hot topic and concern of the neighbors.
All right, so I am Eric McCarthy. Once again, I'm with West Consultants. We were the hydraulic engineers for the project. So, I have a few more slides to review since I know that a lot of people are concerned about here. So, to start off with, I...
Say it again, sorry. Really speaking of...
All right.
Getting a good record.
All right, so...
Thank you.
How's that? Good? All right, so to start off, I want to review some floodplain terminology, because honestly, floodplain regulation can get a little bit complicated. It can get a little bit confusing. So, so that we're prepared, you know, later on in the presentation when we start talking about the existing flood risk and the proposed changes to the floodplain. All right, so FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, you know, identifies areas that will be flooded during the 1% annual chance flood. Now, these floods are typically referred to as the 100-year flood. Now, sometimes you can get a 100-year flood that happens 20 years apart or 200 years apart, but generally... But generally, it just means that a flood of this magnitude will occur approximately every 100 years. Now, development within the 100-year floodplain is regulated by both FEMA and by the city. And if you look over on this figure to the right, this shows a cross-sectional view of the 100-year floodplain. So we have the stream channel in the middle and then a little bit outside of that, we have the floodway. And that is a portion of the 100-year floodplain that's generally preserved from development in order to give floodwaters a place to go. And then outside of the floodway, we have the fringe portion of the 100-year floodplain. Now FEMA allows development to occur within the fringe portion of the 100-year floodplain as long as it doesn't increase the 100-year water surface elevation by more than one foot. Now, local communities can choose to have more strict regulations, and that's exactly what the city has done here. They essentially are requiring that any development within the flood fringe at this location do not cause any rise to the 100-year water surface elevation. All right. So if you look at this map over here, this shows the official special flood hazard areas in the vicinity of the project, which is up in the right, the upper left-hand corner. Now that red and blue hashed area, that represents the floodway. That's the portion of the 100-year floodplain that's generally preserved from development. And then outside of that, in the blue area, that represents the fringe area in the 100-year floodplain. Now, homes and businesses with government-backed mortgages located within the 100-year floodplain are required to have flood insurance. Now, homes located outside of that, including the orange area, which is the 500-year floodplain, are not required to have flood insurance. So we can see why the delineations of the 100-year floodplain is pretty important for regulatory purposes. And, you know, to determine who is required to have flood insurance. All right. So the way that a official FEMA floodplain is revised is done by a letter of map revision. This is a letter from FEMA officially revising the current special flood hazard area mapping. Now, the revised floodplain mapping can't be done by just anyone. It has to be done by a licensed engineer. And it has to be based on a detailed, updated hydraulic analysis of the site that relies on surveyed topographic data, detailed bridge plans. And using that, an accurate 100-year floodplain can be delineated. Now, before moving forward, even reviewing the proposed development, the city required that the floodplains in the vicinity of the proposed project be updated to generally accurately represent the existing flood risk within the vicinity of the project. All right. So why did the city require the updated flood maps? Well, the old floodplain mapping was based on an old study, an old hydraulic analysis, over 40 years old. It relied on obsolete topographic data, had less advanced hydraulic modeling tools were available in the late 70s and early 80s. And most importantly, the old floodplain maps did not account for recent major projects and development that has occurred in the vicinity of South Scapuce Creek. Now, these projects include the JP West Road Bridge Replacement, the construction of Veterans Park, and the Scapuce Bay Watershed Council Stream Restoration Projects. So all of those projects change the flood risk within the vicinity of the project. So the city required that the floodplain maps reflect that changed flood risk. All right. So this shows the updated flood maps that were part of the letter of map revision. Now, these were submitted to FEMA for review and were accepted in April 2021. Now, if we look at the mapping, the red line represents the previous 100-year floodplain. The blue area represents the current updated 100-year floodplain. Now, the first thing that you'll notice is that the updated 100-year floodplain is quite a bit smaller than the previous 100-year floodplain. In fact, there's quite a few properties east of the creek that were removed from the 100-year floodplain. So those properties are no longer required to have flood insurance. Now, the general idea behind why there was a significant decrease in the extent of the 100-year flooding is largely related to all the large projects that happened along South Scapuce Creek, including that stream restoration project, the replacement of the bridge, and the construction of the park. All right. So we're going to talk about the February 2019 flood a little bit. Now, this flood is important because it's the most recent major flood and it's the only major flood to occur since these major construction projects were completed along South Scapuce Creek. Now, the reason why it's a important flood to kind of compare to our updated flood maps is because it's the only major flood to occur with the current conditions within the river system. And so if we look at the updated 100 floodplain maps, you can kind of get a general idea of how well they match the, what was observed near the peak of the February 2019 flood with the northern baseball field being dry next, and you know, the southern baseball field being mostly inundated. A little bit of water maybe spilling over JP West Road. And then at the project site, it's kind of hard, at the project site. I have to squint a little bit, but you can see a couple of flood fingers extending, extending into the floodplain. And you can see how that compares to the revised 100-year floodplain. Now, just a little caveat is we don't know the exact size of this February 2019 flood. But, you know, in general, it at least gives us a level of confidence that, you know, the hydraulic modeling as part of the LOMER process produced results that are generally in line with the known recent major flooding. All right. So moving on to the proposed project and its impacts to the proposed floodplain. So as I previously mentioned, FEMA allows development to occur within the 100-year floodplain in that fringe portion as long as it doesn't increase the 100-year water surface elevation by more than one foot. However, due to known flooding issues within the area and the potential impacts to neighbors, the city has more strict requirements, essentially saying that the 100-year water surface elevation cannot increase by more than 0.00 feet, which is a no-rise. Furthermore, no additional fill will be placed in the 100-year floodplain unless the volume is offset with material removed from the floodplain. Now, the general idea behind this is if you have a flood moving down a river system, the floodplains kind of act like large bathtubs that store up water. And if you start putting a bunch of dirt and filling it in the floodplains, well, that's going to potentially increase the flood risk for downstream properties because it's going to push that water that used to be stored, you know, away from the property. Now, that's why there's the requirement that there be no net decrease in floodplain storage for the 100-year flood. And finally, the proposed units will be at least 2.5 feet above the 100-year water surface elevation. And this is kind of a safety buffer to protect against hydraulic and hydrologic uncertainties, including the potential increase to the 100-year flood due to climate change. Okay. So this figure shows the cut and fill balance that ultimately caused that there be no net decrease in the flood storage for the 100-year floodplain. The green areas show location where fill was placed within the 100-year floodplain. And purple areas show areas where material was removed from the floodplain. So ultimately, there would be no net decrease in floodplain storage. All right. So previously, we talked about a letter of map revision. That's how FEMA's floodplain maps can be revised. Well, a conditional letter of map revision is a letter from FEMA showing the proposed revisions to a special flood hazard area based on a proposed project. Now, like a letter of map revision, the proposed floodplain needs to be based on a detailed hydraulic analysis by a licensed engineer. And this is developed using the plans provided by the site engineer. And ultimately, the CLOMR is submitted to the city and to FEMA for review to ensure that it complies with all of the floodplain regulations. Now, after the project would be completed, another letter of map revision is required. Now, the purpose of this is to officially revise the mapping and also demonstrate that it still satisfies both the city and FEMA's requirement based on what was actually constructed at the site. All right. So as part of the conditional map of revision, this shows the proposed 100-year floodplain versus the current effective 100-year floodplain. Now, the proposed floodplain's in blue, the current effective is in red. And the first thing that I want to point out is that both the proposed and the current floodplain boundaries coincide both upstream of the proposed project, downstream of the proposed project, and along the eastern boundary of the floodplain. That's because of the requirement that there be no increase in the 100-year water surface elevation, the no-rise requirement. Now, if you look along the left, we do have some changes in the floodplain boundary based on the fill that would be placed in the proposed development. And you can see that the 100-year floodplain skirts along outside of the lots on the proposed development. And the only other property impacted by the proposed changes is the property directly north of the proposed development, just south of, yeah, the road. And that one would be removed from the 100-year floodplain. So it had, it would have a lowered risk of flooding. Other than that, there are no changes to the 100-year floodplain. All right. So just a summary of the hydraulic analysis that we completed. So the proposed development causes no rise in the 100-year water surface elevation. Fill will be placed within the floodplain to remove the development from the 100-year flood. Furthermore, there's a cut and fill balance that requires that no net storage is lost from the 100-year floodplain. And finally, the proposed units will be at least 2.5 feet above the 100-year flood. And just to give a little bit more context with that, what that difference actually means. So the 500-year flood is about 0.8 feet higher than the 100-year flood. So this 2.5 feet would mean that the proposed units are still, you know, about 1.5 feet above the 500-year flood. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I wanted to also clarify something for you. There's been some responses to public testimony, which were, I indicated that homes would be at least two feet above the 100-year flood elevation. And that's basically in response to the specific condition, condition of approval in the application that requires it to be two feet. We went back a couple of days ago and looked at the actuals. The actuals, the closest that, or the shortest distance between a finished floor of a house on this site and the floodplain elevation will actually be 2.5 feet, and all other homes will be higher than that. For concluding findings, like was mentioned, there's no development that is proposed within the floodplain. All homes are proposed with a finished floor elevation greater than two feet above the 100-year floodplain. There will be no net rise in the flood surface elevation as a result of the development. In actuality, the proposal includes a net increase in floodplain storage of nine cubic yards or existing conditions. Cut and fill areas will be certified following construction to ensure floodplain storage is maintained. The applicant has demonstrated with substantial evidence in the record that the development complies with the applicable approval criteria, including those from the city of Scapuce, Comprehensive Plan, Transportation System Plan, Land Use and Development Code, and the Public Works Design Standards, also complies with Oregon statewide land use planning goals and DLCD review, FEMA requirements, Army Corps of Engineer, and DSL joint permitting requirements, and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. We have reviewed the conditions of approval. We take no issue with the conditions and accept them as they are. Our entire team here is available to answer any questions that the commission may have as we move forward. So how the rest of this is going to go? Yeah, thank you. Is we're going to have a couple of comment, neutral comments, and anybody who wants to speak in favor of the project, and anybody who wants to speak in opposition to the project. And then applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, staff response, any questions by the planning commission, and then deliberations. What I'm going to be doing is you're going to hear two names. First person is, first, you're who's being called up to speak. Second person, you're next. You're on deck. So if you can, you know, start shuffling your way to where it's easy for you to get to the mic so we can be respectful. And please address the criteria puzzle. That's all, that's what we have to work with. Please be clear about what criteria comments are applying. Right. Just up, our neutral speakers, we're going to have John Archibald. And then Leonard Aplett is on deck. John, you'll have five minutes. Start with your name and city, please. Enunciate into the microphone.
Yeah. Well, I think I'm the fourth engineer on deck here, so probably won't do much better. I'll try. I'm John Archibald. I'm sorry, state, you said?
City.
City. I work, I'm a consultant in Tigerhead, actually, with a company called SCS Engineers. I'm a professional engineer. So I was asked to come here by Joel on behalf of the neighbors who are working on this project. I'm also a hydraulic engineer, have worked on floodplain mapping, analysis, permitting, and design projects, similar to Eric over here with Wes. I have great respect for Wes as a hydraulic engineering firm, and I have a lot of confidence in their work. I'm not here to oppose the project. I'm here because I enjoy offering my thoughts when we're discussing floodplain impacts and projects. I've been involved as a consultant to proponent engineers with floodplain and flood storage impacts in the past as well. I believe development in and around floodplains can be done responsibly. So I agreed to come here, not compensated, just as a additional comment for the privilege of being part of the conversation. So I have only taken a fairly cursory look at the plans. I have reviewed the FEMA current floodplain mapping as well as the LOMR that's on file. I have taken a pretty surface look at the project, and I just wanted to offer a couple of thoughts. As Eric alluded to, floodplain storage is important because it helps to attenuate the flows, which is to say back them up a little bit so that they can be released at a slower rate. Local cut and fill requirements for floodplain are a very well-intentioned and proper way of preserving that storage and that hydrologic function. So, you know, I don't feel that this project has been approached in a responsible or an improper way hydraulically. And it does appear to be informing to federal, state, and, and local regulations. I'm offering just a few thoughts on hydraulic analysis for floodplain impacts of this project, and I'll make them pretty brief. Essentially, the cut-fill balance does help preserve floodplain storage, flow, kind of intensity control. However, the place where that additional fill, excuse me, that additional cut or additional floodplain storage is being added isn't exactly where it's being eliminated. And generally speaking, you know, adding volume to the bathtub and taking away volume from the bathtub generally on the same reach and approximately the same volume, same side of the channel, is generally pretty much meeting the concern. In this particular case, a couple of observations I have is that the change in floodplain storage is along a very the change in floodplain storage is along a very sharp bend in the creek, and it's also just upstream of a bridge. So, if I were approaching this project from a proponent perspective, which I have, for the FAA on airports, as well as for developers of residential and commercial sites, I would recommend checking the following things on, on a basis of liability. So, first of all, I would be interested to see how the flow velocities that continue downstream of the channel through the bridge might be affected by the particular geometry change of the flood storage and the shape of the channel right there. I would be interested to see if the scour potential around the supports, excuse me, okay?
One minute.
Close to wrapping up. Be interested to see what the scouring potential, where the water goes through the bridge, may or may not be affected by any kind of change in velocity, intensity, or hydrograph timing. I'm not a geomorphologist, which, which is a person who studies river health and river movement, but I would be interested to have a geomorphologist look at the attractive forces which Hecraz calculates, which is the model for the FEMA, see if there's any potential for aggravated stream movement. Now, I don't think that any of these are necessarily the case, it looks like most of the impacts are high on the bank of the floodplain and the creek. And the great news is that I think, taking a look at those couple of things, the velocity scour potential and storage impact can be accomplished by using hydraulic models that already exist. Wes produced an updated effective model, as Eric discussed, which demonstrates what's here now, and the exact same newer version of the model could be used to generate the answers I just mentioned, thanks a lot.
Thank you. And as NJ has reminded us, he's running the time, he'll let you know when it's one minute left and when. Alright, next we have Leonard Applet. With a neutral comment.
Hi, Leonard Applet, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, did you want to mention the next person who's, okay?
You're changing section.
Gotcha.
Alright, we own property directly south of the Buxton property, and so we're not opposed to the subdivision, but we did have some comments based upon the proposal. The, as was discussed earlier, the, the new portion of Eggleston Lane is proposed to be improved only to the end of lots 17 and 18, and there to the end of the property would be an easement for a future Eggleston Lane, but not improved. As we all know from subdivisions all over town and all over every town, is if improvements aren't done at the time the development is made, they're either never done, or they're paid for by future landowners. And so, I would expect that this property pay for the improvements to Eggleston Lane all the way to the property line, so that any future connection with the existing Eggleston Lane properties is not bore, unduly borne by the property owners that currently own property on Eggleston Lane. That the property development pay for those improvements when the money is available. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Right next, don't have anybody signed up, but does anyone want to speak in support of the project? Okay, now we're gonna move to people speaking in opposition of. Yeah, please. Same, enunciate into the mic, and you got five minutes.
That's great, I won't take up too much of your time. Hi, everyone, my name is Max from David Weekly Homes. I know I'm here, I'm maybe a little bit biased here, but I just want to appreciate, I just want to acknowledge the fact that we look forward to being a part of your community. We're a home builder with 45 years of experience. We, we try to hire the best consultants for our communities, we take the time, we review the projects, and we love what we do. We hope this, this project will be a great addition to your city, and, and I know the application was very long, and there's a lot to swallow. So, but I just hope that shows that the amount of effort and that we've put into this, so just, just want to thank you for your time for attending this meeting. And like I said, we, we'll, we'll hope to build the best product we can for your communities. If you have any doubt in our product, I wanna, I wanna just let you know, we are a private home builder, a big net, and nationwide builder, but a private one, not a public one. We put a lot of heart and soul into every home that we design and develop, and we work on a personal basis with every person that wants to build with us. And so, if, if anyone wants to, you can come check out some of our homes to see if you think they would look great in our communities, we have great model homes available throughout Beaverton and Hillsborough, and, and so, like I said, thank you for taking your time, we just wanna, we just want to let you know that we truly care about your community, and and like I said, we've, we've, you know, all these consultants are here for you tonight, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in support of it? Right, now we're gonna go to those speaking in opposition. Finder to speak into the mic, keep your comments related to the criteria. And we're gonna move through these, see where we're going, but we're probably gonna take a break around nine, everybody to stretch or do what you need to do. So, William Etter's gonna be up, and then Peggy Tate is on deck.
Good evening, William Etter, E-T-T-E-R, resident of Scappus for about 20 years. Live on JP West Road across from Eastview. My sentiments are already reflected in the attached letters to the staff report provided today at the meeting here. Shannon Hubler testimony, Roy Jobin letter, and the Jennifer and John Hancock letters. I cannot go any further in describing what I feel or what I observe about this situation for development. I also have a lack of credibility, feelings of credibility for those that have spoke here tonight, I have my doubts as to what's going on. To me, there are too many obvious problems that have yet to be addressed, or will they ever be solved? Again, laid out in the letters contained herein, staff report attachments. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. Good evening.
Thank you. Alright, Peggy Tate, you're up, and Pat Anderson is on.
Peggy Tate, Peggy Tate. And I, I'm from Scappus. My house is, I've lived there 32 years, it's directly across from the creek and the Buxton property, et cetera. I understand these people have made their, you know, their tests and stuff, but until you live there, like he said about the flood, February whatever, 19, it's, it floods every year, it matters how bad it floods, even in the park, the bathrooms flood. The whole thing floods, and unless you live there, you don't see it. And then the fact of traffic, if you do 48 houses, they're probably gonna have two cars apiece, 96 cars. 96 cars going onto JP West, as it is with the park, we do have a whole lot of traffic. Because generally, you know, the park's full of different things. But my point is, we have so much problem with traffic now, not being able to get out of your driveway, whatever, there's, it's bad. And I think that this would be an extremely big mistake because I, I don't trust what they've said about flooding, because we've watched it for 32 years, we've had our yard flood, we've had other things flood. And it is a constant thing, and I'm done, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone, please speak to the specific criteria you think is not, is at issue, not being met or being ignored. Peggy's up. Wait. Pat Anderson, and then Joel and Judy Haugen are gonna be coming up next.
I'm Pat Anderson, I live in Scappus, I've been a resident for almost 30 years. I've lived in the same vicinity for those 30 years, and I've seen the area flood. I had submitted written comments, last week I got a confirmation that those comments were received, I didn't see them in this staff report, so I'm not sure where they are.
Exhibit 43.
Okay, so I'm not gonna reiterate some of those things, I think a lot of the same concerns will be voiced. The things that I'm concerned about really are about the people, the innocent people who will come and buy that property, and what they'll be subjected to. This is being marketed as a affordable housing. When we built our house, we had to go through all the geotechnical analysis and engineering, and we had to have the, you know, I probably am not using the right terms, but all the dirt compressed to accommodate that, it was being built during the winter when it was raining, nonstop. That was a very costly expense on our behalf, just for our one house. It almost put us over what we could afford for that house, because it wasn't anticipated. So, what I would like to understand is, I would like to understand what that project budget is in, in the development. So, all the modifications that have to be made on that land, what is that going to do to the development costs, which will then be passed on to those home builders after those homes are, are built? In addition to if any of those homes have to have the flood insurance, you know, even, even though they showed that map where some of it may, may not still be needed, I'm just really concerned on whether or not those houses will still be considered affordable housing. And actually, what is that anymore? But, so just out of interest, I did Google David Weekly Houses on the internet, looking for reviews and feedback. I saw on the Better Business Bureau, they had a 1.5 stars out of 5-star rating, there were quite a few reports. They were all closed, I know how that process works, so they were all considered resolved. People don't have the money to spend on lawyers to fight these big developers, so basically, you just, you just take your losses and you just fold. So, I would think that someone who doesn't pay attention to the quality of what they're building, which was around workmanship, leaking roofs, it went on and on, but there was a very common theme. So, if they don't have the, the level of quality on just that, that, the basic building of a house, do we entrust them in building something that's going to impact people moving in, our infrastructure here, our ecosystem? I don't have confidence in that as well. As far as the, the report on the, the traffic, one thing, I didn't see any numbers in that analysis at all. I'm kind of a numbers and facts person, so I didn't see any numbers, it was kind of like, hey, we're telling you it's so, so it must be so. You know, I don't, I don't take that. But one thing that was really missing from that analysis was the safety of pedestrians, we don't have sidewalks here in Scappus. And the, the thoroughfares that they were talking about were all the thoroughfares that are around the high school. We have a problem around here now with people speeding up and down the roads in a 25-mile speed zone, they're going 35, 45 miles an hour now. We know that's a problem in this community. So, kids trying to walk to school, to the middle school, which they have to go down those roads, that increased traffic is gonna impact the safety of the pedestrians. That was nowhere in the comments that I had seen when they presented that in regard to the traffic. I think that was pretty much the only, all the notes that I wanted to, to make, outside of the other concerns about the flooding and, and, you know, the, the increased traffic and, and those things, I think those will be covered by other people. But I would really like to see the budget, you know, how, how are they going to market these houses being affordable based upon the costs to, to modify this land to make it so it will not flood?
And thanks, everybody, for keeping the comments not repetitive, that's really helpful. Yeah, Joel and Judy. Haugen.
A point of clarification before NJ starts the clock, okay? Judy and I both signed up as to testify, so do we get, can we go over the five minutes?
So they would, as long as they do it back-to-back, they could do five minutes each. So if you have a script or something, you can just pass it to each other.
Fair enough.
So, is it strictly one at a time speaking, or like just do the whole thing?
I mean, if we're technically following the rules, we would need one to speak for five, and then, then the, the other to speak for five. Otherwise, we have, we have issues where like, you can get six people to sign up, and one person, that's what we want to avoid.
Can we get a second sheet, so they're individually have sheets? And then, we each get five minutes, make sure we're doing it one at a time.
I'm Judy Haugen and Joel Haugen, we've been Scappus residents since 1978. Good evening, commissioners. We have limited time to testify, and I trust you've all read your packets, and I would like to reinforce the thinking behind the original intent of the 1973 Oregon Land Use Planning Law, page 526, noting the concerns for loss of open space and natural beauty around urban centers. Community green space, exhibit 38, is of great consequence to community health and well-being. One consequence, one consistent feedback from Scappus citizens at the annual town meetings is that they value green space, and they want more of it. As in all communities, floodplains are best used for parks and open space. The 17-acre Buxton floodplain property also serves as a percolator for South Scappus Creek's several listed species and habitat for all kinds of associated critters. Paving and placing housing on seven acres of it will have negative consequences to both water quality and the ambient temperature of the creek, regardless of the specified mitigations proposed. If this development is approved, it will stimulate the development suggested in the circulation plan, further degrading community green space and adding more consequences to the creek that makes Scappus special. Neighbors have photos of large salmon swimming up Scap, South Scappus Creek to spawn, before local development reduced the natural habitat, which leads me to goal five. Goal five states, "Local governments shall adopt programs that will protect natural resources and conserve scenic, historic, and open space resources for present and future generations." Not may, can, or try to preserve open spaces, it says shall. Regarding goal seven, I would like to draw your attention to guideline A, item one. In adopting planned policies and implementing measures to protect people and property from natural hazards, local governments should consider: A, the benefits of maintaining natural hazard areas as open space, recreation, and other low-density uses; B, the beneficial effects that natural hazards can have on natural resources and the environment; and C, the effects of the development, of development and mitigation measures in identified hazards area on the management of natural resources. I also submit that FEMA did not do the necessary diligence on their grant, granting of a conditional letter of map revision. The entire 17,352-acre watershed should have been considered in the flooding circulation. The entire 17,352-acre watershed should have been considered in the flooding circulation. We know for certain the gravity works, so all the percolation that does not evaporate, percolate, I'm sorry, that all the precipitation that does not evaporate, percolate, or is absorbed in the end will end up as surface flow down in the Buxton floodplain. Since this is a phased development, what happens if FEMA erred or starts factoring in future flooding projections such as flood factor or kit risk or LOMAR is never issued? Buxton Farms development will flood due to increasing storm intensities and the seven acres of streets, driveways, sidewalks, and homes will exasperate flooding upstream, downstream, and across the stream. 90% of these 48 houses are unlikely to have flood insurance. Who pays for the recurring damages? How will the covenants and restrictions realistically be enforced? Prudent communities are buying up floodplain homes, not building new ones. In order for you to approve this conditional application, the developers must show compensating benefits to the environmental harm, increasing flood hazards, additional traffic, and various other degrading elements to our community. They have most certainly failed to do so.
And Steve Collard is on deck.
I'm Joel Haugen. Scapuce. The bottom line with this application is that Scapuce is a home-rule community. And Buxton Farms, as proposed, would do grave harm to our city. Scapuce is not the developer's city, nor the engineers or lawyer's city, nor the people pushing this development. You alone have the authority to deny or approve this application, and you have sufficient cause to deny it, in my view. The City Council may well overrule you, and then again, the Land Use Board of Appeals may overrule the City Council. But at least you can go to your Scapuce home tonight, knowing that you did everything you could to protect our cherished community. In closing, please consider a few of the extreme flood events that have happened just this year in 2022. Judy, if you'd hold up those, just a few examples.
Sure, it's not going to show up very well, but show the camera.
Yeah.
These are just a few that have showed up in 2022. 63 miles away in Chahelas, Washington. Take a look at that. That was in January of this past year, of 2022. Okay, these have occurred all over the country. How long before one of these atmospheric rivers comes our way? Now, if you'd hold up NASA's, on the backside of that, there we go. If NASA's projections are accurate, the 1996 flood will be tame in comparison to future flooding. So I think we should listen to folks that really know their stuff. Okay, we submit these comments for the record and ask that the Buxton Farms hearing remain open for 14 days for additional written testimony. Okay, thank you very much.
Steve Collard is up, and we have Jennifer Hancock on deck.
So I jotted a few thoughts. Can you hear me okay? Beautiful. Great. And most of them relate directly to the proposal. Some are personal. On behalf of my many neighbors, myself, first, I want to thank the Commission for giving us a forum in which to voice our opinion. Our primary concern is well-known. It's periodic flooding, as you've already been aware of from all of our testimonies so far, notably in 96, but also in 2015, which hasn't been mentioned yet, and 2019, which you've seen. In each case, floodwaters extended well into the proposed development area, as well as Veterans Park, which you also saw from the aerial view. We just recently received the over 500-page staff report detailing the development plans. That is very complex, and we recently retained a respected land use law firm located in Portland by the name of Hathaway Larson LLP to help us better understand this proposal. Their review is ongoing, but already there are discrepancies related to compliance with the various city design and construction standards, particularly the developer's ability to meet the criterion of addressing health, safety, and welfare of the community. Just a few of their observations include alteration of the floodway, which could have serious health and safety ramifications for not only the residents of the proposed development, but residents upstream from the development. Even if water is somehow mitigated at the development site, the flow is still connected upstream and will impact land and residents there. Number two, the city design standards require compatibility with adjacent neighborhoods, which currently have a more rural feel, whereas the development is defined as being more dense and urban feeling. This also begs a question, were larger lots, low-density designs simply not profitable enough? Number three is sensitive lands, which include both plant, animal species, which are currently present. And the only way for a developer to claim to not be developing in the sensitive land floodway is to greatly impact the land by changing the floodway. For example, it was noted that two of the proposed stormwater detention ponds are in the current floodway, necessitating the need for construction in the floodway. This is also true of road construction. The floodway needs to be altered by creating and moving fill, and it was noted that our own city design standards state that there can be no fill activity in a floodway. Other concerns concern maximum block length being exceeded, the fact that there's currently only one way in and out of the development as proposed, the question being how our emergency service is going to be able to get in and out effectively. The firm is still looking at details, but their summary is pretty clear about the proposal depending upon altering the current and natural floodway with fill to achieve the development goals, goals which require work that appear to be contrary to city design standards. On a personal level, I see development of this area of Scapuce as extremely risky from an environmental standpoint for potential residents in proximity of such development and for the city of Scapuce from a legal standpoint. The evidence is abundant. Our climate is changing. The data and the decisions based on that data is changing rapidly. We are expected to receive more rainfall here, not less. Once the damage is done, there is no going back. And if I were a homeowner with a flooded home, the first and second parties I would look to would be the builder and the city that approve the development. Given the risk and complexity of this more than 500-page proposal, and in the interest of being a detailed and balanced understanding for this nonpartisan commission, I ask, just like Joel did, I ask the Commission to keep the record open for 14 days in order to support our existing request for access to the earlier 2003 development application and for more detailed insight from Hathaway Larson.
Is Greg Hathaway representing you? Which lawyer?
No. Name is Chris.
Chris Kovak?
Any other questions?
Could you, Chair, ask that the clapping not occur?
No, you want to. That's the no demonstrations bit that I read out of the prepared statement that is required by the state. All right, so Jennifer Hancock, you are up, and Deb Miller is on deck.
Didn't know I would be allowed to speak today, but thank you. Thank you for your service to the community.
Please speak into the mic.
Just like I need.
I know I'm a broken record.
It's okay. The FEMA criteria, well, and even the proposal, Buxton's proposal, regarding the floodplain map that FEMA changed, is he uses the criteria of the watershed work that they did on the, on the creek, which I have a picture of in here, which you probably saw. It's been completely eroded, and now it's actually a danger to the kids or anyone falling in there. But those sorts of things don't work on an S creek. Also, the bridge, it didn't stop any flooding or stop any water. It just protected the bridge because it's higher now, but the water still comes. So those two things didn't mitigate any floodwater. And the third thing was, let me out here. Oh, the park. The park doesn't mitigate any flooding either. It's just there, it saved the soil and the grass by putting in the waffle, plastic stuff. It didn't stop any water from coming in. It just holds the grass. An S creek by its very nature is always changing. Tree falls in on one side and the water moves. The current changes. So you can't control an S creek. Trees are going to fall in it all up and down from now until forever. So I think the criteria that they used to change the map and to think that they've mitigated problems with, by putting in a higher bridge and building retaining walls within the creek, which only causes to have terrible silt problems for the next flooding event, which you all saw with the brown water. So anyway, that's a, I just don't think you can control nature, the nature of an S creek. The other questions I have, how much for the developer or the engineer? How much green space and riparian area will be left if you put in Phase 2? And how many houses is that?
It's just a question and answer period?
Oh, it isn't. I'm sorry. Okay. So also, it seems like there's a conflict of interest with Scapuce and your community rating system. You're part of FEMA preferred rate, discount rate for flood insurance. And that community rating system means Scapuce has to regulate activities. It requires that floodplain activities be managed above and beyond the minimum national flood insurance program standard, above and beyond. I think we need to have a bigger traffic analysis because this is just for 48 houses. But I know Scapuce has plans for more developments up JP West, maybe as much as 90, 86, 100. I don't know what your numbers are, but you guys know what's coming. And it's a lot more than the 48 houses and the cars from that. So you put another 100 up the hill, all coming down JP West, you're going over Keys to Dutch Canyon. That's your only way. An analysis needs to be done to include all of those developments that you're planning. The other conflict is it would be a violation of the... You would be encroaching on designated floodways and diminishing the carrying and storage capacity of existing floodplain. It would be diminished by the proposed development, and then the city would be in violation of Development Code 17.84.180A. So I think a lot more review needs to happen, and traffic analysis is really important. And I suggest that you give us more time to review all these documents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've just got a few more of these. Deb Miller is up, and then we have Jim Lycan's on deck.
Hello, everyone. My name is Deb Miller, and I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for giving me an opportunity to submit my testimony tonight. My home is on Jobin Lane on Tax Lot 1600. It overlooks the Buxton property. My family has lived there since 1981. We have watched the creek flood countless times over those years. We used to take many videos and photographs, but not so many lately, which I now regret as they would have come in very handy at this time. The reason that we stopped doing it was because it actually became so commonplace and unremarkable when that field floods that it didn't seem abnormal anymore at all to watch that nature show when the weather gets crazy. I can't even imagine what the future holds, what kind of weather events we're going to see in the next 15 to 20 years. If I were a potential home buyer and I was looking to buy a new home in Scapuce and I knew that the home was built on a floodplain that was just rezoned, I wouldn't buy it. I believe the only buyers that will invest in something like that would be unsuspecting ones who don't know about the history of the property, but they will soon learn that their precious new home is on land prone to repeated flood risk. They will find out, but it will be too late. The rest of us knew disaster there was imminent. They got taken advantage of. They trusted the developer's careful plan. They purchased from a builder who is long gone, but who enjoyed profiting from them, but not actually providing a solid, long-term investment. I envision in a decade or two, if they are still habitable, many of the homes will become rentals. I think it's only natural that after repeated flood events, the owners will wish to sell. But how do you get rid of a home? How do you sell it when now everyone is wise to the risk on that land? Because by then, it's made the news at least once or twice, and insurance companies aren't going to offer affordable insurance, if any at all, on property that has experienced flood damages. If a house cannot be insured, it cannot be sold. So the owner moves and rents it out. Now, a housing development that features multiple rentals is not one that I want in my backyard. I know how poorly rental homes are cared for and how common it is for these communities to become a hotbed for blue light tenants, blue lights meaning the cops are there a lot. In reviewing the submittal to the best of my layman ability, the development looks to have been carefully planned. Everything appears in order. Clearly, they put together a convincing pitch and have thrown a lot of money at it. But those of us who love living here in Scapuce have this one thing in common. We want to preserve the small-town livability that we enjoy, the green spaces, the quiet and almost crime-free environment that is so rare to find nowadays. I urge the Planning Commission to recommend not approving this application to strike the delicate balance between vibrant growth of our community and a short-sighted development that will not be conducive to making Scapuce a better place to live. I appreciate your attention, and I thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this matter. I do realize that I did not specifically speak to the criteria of the application. However, there was no criteria included on the application that talked about future potential and adverse effects that were outside of what was given by the people who provided the information. I also submitted a video that I took from my back deck on the February 2019 flood. I submitted it as a part of the written comments, but I was informed that there was really no way to show it at this meeting. So I am in favor of also having an extension to this and also an opportunity to perhaps show the video footage because it clearly shows a lot more water than the photograph that was presented by West Consultants. Again, thank you.
There would be time if it's within your still...
Got one more comment?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm trying to wrap that.
Excuse me, Chair. Point of order. Question. Can you please tell me who spoke prior to Deb Miller, please, as I'm taking notes?
Was Jennifer Hancock.
Thank you.
All right. Jim Lycan's.
Sorry, I was unable to attend personally. I'll avoid duplication for you and keep it short and sweet. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to address, and I couldn't find the page number online because it's cut off in the image there, but it would be an aerial photo. It's number, page number 12 from the circulation plan, from the submitted street and storm plan and profile. And I find it a little disingenuous, but since it was submitted, this image was submitted by the developers. It seems like it's fair game. I'd like, I find it a little disingenuous that the developers' presentation overlooked an additional 47 lots that are on that image, which I assume are part of their own intended projects. And we're talking 94 units, not 48 units. And to overlook that seems less than forthcoming. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in opposition? Please make it fast. Come on up. You'll be on deck. Make sure to get that. Stay right there.
My name's Darryl Clark, 51995 Southwest Body Lane, Scapoose. I looked through the audience here, and I'm one of the older people, and I've watched this property flood time after time. One thing that I haven't heard addressed tonight is the houses behind Red Myers that drained into the creek, this been since that flood, and the houses that's been proposed up on Keys Road. Where is that water going to go? I've got, I think, from my past experience, if this, if this development goes through, you're going to affect people clear up the Raymond Creek. And me, it's just a bad idea, like put a saddle on a pig. It just makes no sense. And I think, but, thank you.
Thank you. We'll be taking a break after we're through with the speaking conversation.
I'll try to speak clear into the microphone. My name's Casey Nielsen. I live in Scapoose. I coach youth football out here. I coach Little League baseball. I do foster care in the community. I work for a nonprofit in Portland with social services with homeless and drug addiction. That's just a little bit about me. I moved to Scapoose a few years ago for quality of life. And I think right now what we're talking about is financial gain and quality of life. My daughter today was brought to City Hall by her school to show what it looks like in somewhat form of like justices, right? And I believe that commissions and planning committees and courthouses are about like quality of life for the community, you know? And I'm really involved in this community because I believe quality of life. And when I hear things being said like buffers or two and a half feet, like just in cases, a just-in-case put in place over to the quality of life or financial gain, it really sparks confusion. It sparks confusion when looking at a committee, and it sparks confusion when my kid's sitting here with me. You know, I know buffers are put in place because we don't know. It could be more. And we talk about what's happening, natural disasters and global warming. And we had, I think, 310-plus degree weathers last summer. So things are changing rapidly, and it sounds like FEMA's decreasing floodplains while NASA's increasing floodplains. So we have these like confliction of information that's happening. You know, we have these confusions amongst community and amongst like stakeholders and profit. And we have a committee that's here to place some sort of judgment upon if quality of life is as important as financial gain. So I figured I'd come up and talk a little bit about me and say my piece. And I appreciate you guys being here in the community, being out here for us. We really, really appreciate that, and that's why we're local to Columbia County. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, last call. Come on up. Is there anybody else that wants to speak after this? They're here or online? Already spoke once. Please stay here.
Okay. My name's Rita Beeson. I'm Scapoose. I have lived here most of my life. I have lived on three different pieces of property on Scapoose Creek for the last 40 years. I worked for the Scapoose Big Watershed Council for 10 years. That was my job, learning what that creek did. I have watched it flood time and time again, including my own property. I'm up Dutch Canyon. Thanks for sending me wrenching that a minute ago. It seems like every time something happens downstream to where there's more building closer to the creeks, more wetlands filled in, the more we flood upstream. It happens worse. 2019, we had more water than we had in 96, which was really amazing. It comes up fast, it goes down fast, but it's already there. Our biggest reprieve in 96 was a dike broke at Scapoose Sand and Gravel. That has filled in. There is no dike to break there and to give relief upstream anymore. We have a 96 flood. The whole system is going to be devastated more than what it was in 96 because we have not created more water retention to mitigate that. After 96, you look at what Eugene did. They did hundreds and hundreds of acres that they put into wetlands to mitigate for high water. I've not seen any of that in Scapoose. We tried and tried and tried when I was with the Watershed Council. We've had set up several pieces of property along Scapoose Creek that was not developed, that was, has gone for sale since then, and they have not acquired it to help mitigate that situation. And to build more in the floodplain is just ludicrous. You're putting everybody at risk.
Thank you. And I think there is one last person, and this will be the last person.
Hello. My name is Darla Knidic, and we moved to Scapoose in 1976. We lived on the other side of the highway for many years. And since 1989, we've lived on Jobin Lane. Our property looks right over where there's going to be some picnic table overlooking the backs of all those houses. I'm concerned about some things that were not mentioned. One is the impact on air quality of this density of housing. The airflow in this area, it tends to just lay there along the creek. And when there's smoke, as we've seen recently, it just lays there. It doesn't move. And it's really a problem for people like me who have some difficulties with breathing. The other thing that I'm concerned about is homeowners association and how they can be forced to actually comply to maintain some of these things that have been in the plan to mitigate the flood. Also, the quality of the water that will be flowing into Scapoose Creek, it will be polluted with pesticides, herbicides that people use on their homes, moss control on their roofs, and from the carbon from cars, gas leakage on property, things like that. They told me when I'd asked about this, that was all going to be contained and filtered, and these filters would be run electronically, and it would be up to the homeowners association to maintain that. And I've had very poor experiences with homeowners associations being able to actually perform something that complicated. It was difficult enough to get people to pay for roofing a house. Anyway, if you have ever worked with homeowners associations, you know that there are some big legal loopholes to getting them to comply with ordinances locally. My other concern is the impact on the infrastructure of Scapoose. No one has talked about the number of children that would be attending schools. Do we actually have space in our schools for this number of new students? The quality of our education will be impacted. What about the sewage? I understand that we have a lot of strain on the infrastructure right now for sewage and water quality. Will the taxes that come in for these new homes actually cover the cost of maintaining and improving our infrastructure in Scapoose to keep the quality up to the same level that we have now in our community? Is it really worth it? Are you going to get enough taxes to really cover this? And we will never be able to reclaim that precious land. They're not making any more green space. It is beyond value for our environment and for our community and our livability and our future. We're not going to get it back once you guys sign on the dotted line. And we're going to remember who signed, us voters. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes opponents. We're going to take a, call it, seven-minute break. So we're going to reconvene at 9:30, and we'll start with the applicant's rebuttal. And please do not speak to the commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Joel.
Excuse me, I hear no audio.
Okay. Marissa, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Chair Jensen. Planning Commissioners, can you hear me okay? My name is Garrett Stevenson. I'm legal counsel for the applicant. And before I jump into any rebuttal, I wanted to take care of some procedural things that may change how we finish up tonight. I understand that there's a request for a 14-day open record period. What we would request is to have that be 10 days for anybody to submit any evidence and testimony. And then allow us, after that, I believe, it's, if I've been doing the math on the fly, but I think after that, seven days for us to provide a response to that. And if that's the case, it means that this planning commission is going to meet one more time to deliberate on what you received during those open record periods. And given the late hour and the volume of testimony we've had tonight, if it's okay with the planning commission, what I'd like to request is that we reserve our time for our rebuttal for the beginning of that next hearing where you will meet again and consider this additional evidence. And there's a number of reasons for that. Number one, it's very late. Number two, there's a lot of people who said a lot of stuff, and we want to make sure we have a chance to think about how to address it all. But also, we think that that makes sense based on these open record periods. But it's certainly up to your discretion.
Yeah, so under our code, normally, the folks asking for the time will get seven.
Seven days.
Seven days. Joel mentioned that they're hiring Chris Kobach, and it sounds like he's had a little bit of time to review. But because our next hearing wouldn't be until the 17th, I asked the applicant if they would be willing to give him 10 days. The applicant then would get seven to introduce a written rebuttal or evidence in order to rebut the points that Chris Kobach and then anybody else, it wouldn't be limited to the lawyer, but certainly, we want to give him time. And that would, we would continue it to the date certain, which will be November 17.
Thinking mission. I think we're not going to get through the meeting, the hearing tonight. I think we've got a good spot to wrap up and stop and continue on 17. Comments, Marissa?
So if I'm understanding correctly, what we're saying is that if we're going to pause the hearing, we're going to then open, leave the record open for 10 days. Sorry. Either we're leaving it open for 10 or 14 days, but the developer would like to have seven days to rebut. And then we will come back on the 17th to finish the hearing.
Yeah, basically.
And what benefit does that do us? Why can't we continue? The question I have is, why can't we continue now and still leave the record open for 10 or 14 days, which still allows the attorney to have seven days to rebut?
If we leave the record open, we're going to have to come back together after that record's closed, one way or another.
Gotcha, okay.
We're going to be continuing the hearing one way or another. And it is getting late, so.
No, agreed. I'm aligned to continue.
Motion, that work?
Question. Because as a commissioner, I guess we're on our honor not to talk to anybody about it. I mean, for that entire period of time. And so if people are approaching us.
Ex parte contact in one minute.
Yeah, so if somebody approaches you, Fred Meyer, and says they have some strong feelings, then what we need for you is to, as soon as you can, you know, write down and say, you know, hopefully explain to them, I can't discuss the merits of this application with you because I need to hear it still. But as long as you disclose those ex parte contacts and, to the best of your ability, describe what the people said to you. And if you don't know who they are, just say that. But we should be fine. And again, under our code, they are entitled, if they request seven days, they're entitled to it. So it's a seven-day continuance, and then we give the chance to rebut, because we want to be very fair. It's just because of how the date's set up, I thought 10 days would be more fair so that Chris Kobach could get, you know, up to speed. And then they'll, of course, get the seven days, and Garrett generously agreed to that. So that's how we came up with it.
We need a motion?
So I can handle just saying the meeting will be continued to November 17th, 7:00 PM, Planning Commission meeting here. And then I think I'm motion 10 days for anybody to keep the record open 10 days and then seven days for rebuttal.
Motion to keep record open for 10 days and allow for seven days for applicant rebuttal period?
Discussion, as they're saying.
Again, that, I guess. What did tonight?
I'm going to say you can keep an hour of time.
Then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
We do have a little bit left of the meeting if anybody wants to.
Counsel chambers, you are muted still. And please make sure you are recording before you start again.
Marissa, can you hear us?
Yes, now I can, thank you.
Okay. I'm just going to forge ahead. The calendar is also on the website. So Planning Commission on Thursday, the 10th. City offices closed on the 11th. Planning Commission will be again on the 17th at 7:00 PM. Economic Development Committee on the 17th at noon, and Parks and Rec at 6:00. Lori, can you sort that out?
Yes.
And the 21st, we have a council work session with PCC and OMC at 6:00, and then City Council at 7:00. And city offices will be closed on the 24th and the 25th. That concludes the calendar. Any commissioner?
I can't remember. Bad memory.
10th?
OXPO headquarters.
OXPO. What's it? I'm sorry.
OXPO headquarters.
Oh, yeah. This hearing will be continued. Right, now commissioner comments. Marissa, we'll just start with you. You have anything you want to comment on?
Not so much a comment. I'd like, I have a question for staff, just on the hearing we just closed, just so I can have a better understanding. Everyone who did public testimony, are we going to receive a transcript of that testimony? Is that possible in advance of the 17th in the continuation? How does that work?
Yeah, I think that we can have the minutes prepared for you ahead of that meeting.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I was taking notes, but it would be great to get that.
Can we have the minutes prepared for the meeting on the 10th, kind of like we would normally do?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. No comments.
All right.
That's done for me.
Yes and no. So I just have a comment regarding a meeting. It was a meeting, so just about community, as far as community outreach with the.
On my mic, please.
Oh, sorry. So I had a question regarding community outreach, regarding the Planning Commission, and how we as planning commissioners can better inform the public of what it is that we're doing. So when they do come to the meetings, they understand what our roles are. I think that would be a really good idea to maybe bring to light and come up with a plan of action as planning commissioners.
It may be worthwhile, just on the 17th, to have a preamble of, we don't get to decide the validity of quality of things, just the, you know.
There is no public comment on this, on the hearing. Let's go. Continue. We completed that section.
Cool.
But in response, Harlow, yeah, I agree. And some of that is something I'd consider just having kind of little blurbs here and there in the newsletter and just sort of helping people understand how to provide public testimony, you know, relating it to criteria, and then what the Planning Commission's role is. And those are things that we can kind of start getting the message out on social media and in the newsletter, things like that. I absolutely would love to do that. I've been a little busy with this one and with OXPO, and so it has not happened yet, but it's definitely on my radar. And then you, as individual planning commissioners, can always explain that role as well as you're talking to people in the community. And that you are tasked with being impartial and that you must consider the approval criteria that are in the development code at the time the application is submitted. That's what your decision is based on. And so if it falls outside of those criteria, it's not something that you would be able to base a decision on. And if you did, the city would potentially be subject to, you know, a future appeal of that decision. And so the other thing is, we do do yearly Planning Commission training. And so that just helps you as commissioners as well to reinforce what that role is. And we'll look for some training as well this upcoming year.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Like, it's exciting to see a packed room. And thank you, everybody, for keeping it a orderly meeting. It did, believe it or not, we moved through that pretty quickly.
Yeah, we did.
You can let anybody else that's already left know, like, this is a good meeting. So thank you for your participation and your involvement with planning process. And look forward to seeing you again on the 17th. Right, any staff comments to close this out?
I'm going to pass and just say that we'll do that on a different night.
I can give an update later, too.
I am thrilled with the pass. We will pick that up on the 10th.
Yeah.
And with that, we are going to close the meeting. What do we got? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
This is what happens when we have meetings that take 17 minutes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Why don't you?